Well, I think we are live. Or were at least, so we'll wait another moment. Yep, we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good morning and welcome to this January 18, not January.
(laughing).
And I'm looking forward to next year, this December 18, 2018, meeting of the Hutchinson City Council. Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Here.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Inskeep?
Here.
Deckent?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Vice Marinsky has agreed to offer an opening prayer for us this morning. Join me in prayer if you would, please. Dear Lord, thank you for all our great blessings during this holiday season. Keep us in your safe harbor as those traveling to see us or those of us that are traveling to go see others. Remind us always of the reason for the season, which is your Son Jesus Christ's birth and allow everyone to have a slightly better year next year than they did this year, even if this was a good year. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David.
Certainly.
Next item.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
This is the part of our meeting where there's an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council on matters that are not already on the agenda. If you wish to address this, please give us your name or come forward, give us your name and address. Is there anybody? Yes, sir.
Just here.
Yes, please, at the podium, sir.
Sorry, I've never done this before, I'm new.
First out, alright, welcome.
Thank you, my name is Travis Wolf. You need my home address?
Yes, sir.
Seven Meadowlark Lane in Hutchinson, Kansas, here. My name is Travis Wolf, like I said, I'm with the Salt Hawk Archery Club. As some of you may or may not know, we leased some ground from you guys out here west of town and we was told that you guys was wanting to put up for, on your agenda to talk about, you know, our lease and reevaluate it, how much we charge and everything. Mr. McAllister went down and talked to a Mr. Shawn Thomas with the City Parks, I believe, and he said that he thought we was kinda taking advantage of the city because we pay a dollar. So I just wanted to touch base with you guys and let you know that what we do do. You know, we have 4H that comes out, they come out, they shoot, we actually help instruct, we do the Boy Scouts, we actually have done merit badges, we have what's called S3DA, which is Scholastic 3D Archery. We have different schools that come out and they actually shoot. We've hosted field days for schools. We do a lot of things, you know, and then we actually have several big shoots a year that bring a lot of people in and we actually have people that stay the night in our community. They spend money, you know, they, you know, Heartland Outdoor, they stay in the motels. We have what's called ASA, Archery Shooters Association. We have two big shoots this year, we have a lot of guys that come from Missouri, Oklahoma, and they stay for at least a night if not two. We had the KBA this year, the Kansas Bow Hunters Association. They came in last year, there was approximately 150 people and out of that, there was at least 40 motel rooms that I know of that was, you know, used. We have monthly shoots that are open to the public, people come out, we shoot, we do everything. And we're a not-for-profit, none of us make a dime, you know, we're board members, which means a whole lot of work, very little pay, you know, so, which I'm sure a lot of you can relate to that. So, you know, we do this just for, for fun and we do it for the sport, you know, and we do it to help schools. McAllister School actually had a program going on after school that a lot of the kids that had nothing to do after school were coming in and shooting. And we helped support them by, we brought our targets in for them, you know, and let the kids shoot them and all of that's free. And all this stuff we do free, you know, for example, we are getting ready to place an order, you know, for the beginning of the year. Our targets run anywhere between $100 for a replacement mid to about $600 for a full target, you know. We banked this year approximately $4,000, you know, and at the end of the year, I think we have $4,200. Out of that, we paid our insurance, which is about $500, and then we use the rest so that we can actually have food for the kids when they come out and then for buying new targets, which doesn't leave us with a lot, you know. And, you know, I understand we lease it from you guys, I just don't want anybody to feel we're taking advantage of anybody because we only pay a dollar. You know, I just want you to know that, you know, we're not making any money, you know, honestly, we don't make enough money to be, you know, it's just the way it is, but we still do it, you know, we find a way, we manage, we get by. So, and I just wanted to let you guys know. So, did I miss anything?
We do all the maintenance on that.
Yes, we do, you know, as part of our lease for that dollar, we do do maintenance, you know, we mow, you know, if a tree falls, you know, we clean it up, you know, we don't leave it there. Anybody is more than welcome, any of you, if you want to come out and tour the grounds, man, I'll meet, I'll let you know. You meet me and I'll show you around, okay? We do mow, you know, we do have, you know, from where we first drive in, you know, clear around, you know, we have our, our boundaries, I'm not sure how many acres are there, but, you know, we mow that, we keep it clean, we keep it nice. We actually have camping areas for people, you know, so that, you know, our members can come in and camp with their families, you know. We have, I think, four members that they don't even shoot a bow, but they come out and they camp and they have fun. We've had weddings out there, you know, like, I guess that's a thing, I don't know, where people like to do a rustic wedding, so, which is great, you know, that's great. I know my wife wouldn't go for that, but, you know, and we do senior pictures, you know, I've had people call me, say, hey, can we do senior pictures? Sure, you know, and I take them out there and we meet them and we do everything, you know, so, but we do have insurance on, you know, everybody that steps on the grounds is required to sign a release form, so, you know, we do that. And then, like I said, you know, we do the maintenance, which the maintenance alone, we have all that ground that we have, I don't know if you all know how much ground we have out there, but we have two little John Deere mowers that have a 42-inch deck. So all that mowing is done, it takes several hours. My little boy right there, he spent, I don't know, at least 50 hours sitting on a mower with me last year, you know, so, you know, it's, and he just does it because he enjoys it, so, you know, I mean, he might get a Hot Wheels, but that's all his payment he gets, but, you know, I mean, we, it's, it's a lot of expense, so, you know, I, I hope you guys don't think we're taking advantage of you. And if you guys do need to charge something, I totally understand, you know, but I just didn't want you to feel like we're stepping on toes out there. So we try to do a lot for the community, so, and I think that's it, so. Anybody else?
I'll come up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
My name's Stan McAllister, I live at 6413 North Jefferson in Hutchinson. And we do have monthly shoots there that are open to the public and we don't charge any of the youth any money to pay to shoot, you know, just the, the family members, you know, the older adults and stuff. And like Travis says, it does take a lot of money to run this club and we have to clear the lanes and everything, we have porta potties we have to pay for to get cleaned up and everything for the people, we haul off our trash, we try to do everything we can do to keep a good club for the city. And it gives a place for adults and youths to come to to shoot their bow because it's illegal to shoot in Hut, in the town of Hutchinson. So, we're trying to give the community a nice place to come, we think we have a nice archery club, and we, we would like for you city members to evaluate our lease again and maybe drop it back down to where it was before for all, because, for all what we do for you guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate, I certainly wouldn't have guessed the number of activities in terms of, with kids as well as the archery, I'm not sure if tournament's the word, but the events that you have, so.
Close enough.
Appreciate, I'm sorry?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay, so appreciate that. I, and I don't think, and I believe I may have been the one that raised the question, that was a matter of feeling like we're taken advantage of. From my own perspective, it's a, it's a matter of, there is, there is some time and cost to the city and, and just, I think of being, being fair and reasonable, at least is where I'm coming from, but I do appreciate your coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was enlightening.
Anyone else? Seeing none, next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or any comment or anything?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. And a second? Motion, the second to approve, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 6A, consider 2018 budget amendment.
I would move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in two seconds to open the public hearing. Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Good morning, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. We are here because I'm proposing to amend the 2018 budget for the bond and interest fund. The bond and interest payments for 2018 were higher than we originally budgeted, mainly in part because of the Streetscape project, which renovated Main Street between 3rd and 5th. I believe when we adopted the 2018 budget, the timing of that bonding was in question and it wasn't included in the 2018 budget. We do have the cash to make those bond payments and we have made those bond payments. We had a higher cash balance at the beginning of 2018 than we had budgeted, so we will have the cash available for that. Are there any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the budget amendment, this item? Seeing none?
Yeah, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved in second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. Okay.
I would move to approve the amendments to the adopted 2018 budget and authorize council members to sign the amended certificate for calendar year 2018.
Second.
Wow, you guys are on point.
Well, motion and second to approve the amendments as, as proposed. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 7A, consider resolution for gap waiver.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance, every year we have this resolution where we waive gap. The state statutes require that we conform to general accepted accounting principles. Unless we approve this to waive those requirements and instead we would report account, according to the Kansas regulatory basis, the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide outlines those requirements. It is believed that this is a simpler, easier to read and comprehend way of accounting compared to gap. So we ask that we approve this waiver for gap. Are there any questions?
My guess is that I've asked this before and I don't know if it's you Angela or John, why is it that we have to do this annually and can't do it for whatever, a period of time, not necessarily forever, but?
It's required by, it is required by.
The law says you will, huh?
Yeah, yes.
Legislative action, okay.
You can't commit.
I don't think we can commit.
You can't commit beyond one year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for the record, Frank Edwards has retired.
I noticed that yesterday and have fixed it for the future.
I ran into him this weekend, I said.
That's right. You did tell him he was supposed to attend, didn't you, to present this?
That's how, you know, this whole process is just the same thing every year, so.
I apologize.
Old email or something, that's funny.
Well, I would move to approve the resolution declaring that the requirements of KSA 75-1120A are not relevant to the preparation of financial statements and reports and waiving the requirement of conformity with said act in favor of conformity with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 7B, consider resolution appropriating funds to pay payrolls and claims for 2019.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance, and this is my last item, I promise.
We like having you up there, Angela.
Currently, we put, we pay invoices to vendors weekly and we pay payroll bi-weekly. We have certain things in place to provide that we have control over our expenditures. The checks are presented in your consent agenda, we have the budget which we must follow, we have purchasing policies and we have other internal controls, including in control, controls over payroll and that it's approved. So we are requesting that we continue this current practice of paying items in advance of them being presented for you as part of the consent agenda. If we did not make this or approve this, then we would have to present those checks to you before we could pay our vendors. So this is, expediates the payment process so we can pay items timely. Are there any questions?
Just curious, what if for some reason some item or whatever that had been paid already was questioned or, or whatever through the, through the next meeting at which it comes up or before us?
I believe we would have to dispute that with the vendor.
Don't know why it would, just curious.
I don't know that that's ever came up since I've been here.
Is there a motion?
I would move to approve resolution providing for the appropriation by fund of the budget of the city of Hutchinson for the year beginning January 1, 2019, and appropriating money from the various funds to pay payrolls and claims against the city of Hutchinson for the calendar year 2019 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the motion as requested, a resolution, I should say. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Pyros Day Carvallo? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Yes.
We're a little off today, I think.
Yeah.
Frank Edwards is.
Item 8A, consider lease agreement for parking lot at Sherman and Walnut.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. This is actually the last component of the arrangement for the Wiley Building, the building of the parking garage. In order to get that lot, we had to purchase it. As a part of the purchase of that lot, we allowed an option on the parking lot at Walnut and Sherman, a portion of it as a part of that transaction. That option has been exercised by Four Results Inc., it is now owned by Four Results Inc. and the council had previously approved that. This is the last component, which is a lease back to the city of that same portion of the lot. The lease provides for a $1 per year, it's a 10-year lease, there are termination provisions for both parties. We will pay the taxes, we will provide insurance coverage, which we are doing right now, and we will take care of the maintenance on the, on the parking lot. And if in the event later there should be a private use for that portion of the lot, the city has the ability to reconfigure the lot to accommodate for that. There's also the possibility, counsel, that nothing may happen, nothing may change and it may remain just to the public as, as a whole. But this is the last component and it is a, it's an arrangement for the city that, that makes sense.
This was contractually spelled out in the same agreement that we talked to last meeting or maybe it was meeting before.
The option was, not the lease, not the lease back to us.
Apart from the lease itself, but have you had any conversations with the owner in terms of his intent for the building itself, the vacant building?
I have not. I know at one point there was a possible sale of the Hope Building.
I see.
And I don't know that that took place.
The, the intent going way back when this all happened was housing, it was a housing upper.
Yeah, it's what he intended.
But that could, certainly could change.
That building's totally vacant, isn't it?
I think so.
There's nothing in the first floor either, I think.
Thanks to my knowledge, it's empty, yeah.
Yeah. It is vacant. Well, it continues to just stay vacant and deteriorates, it's a, it's an eyesore, sorry, sorry about that property owner, but it is an eyesore. Don't know if we can prompt any conversation about what the future intent of use of that would be.
Now, I think, well, we've had, said we've had those conversations, I know it was up, he had an auction, didn't sell.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, just recently. Yeah, that was part of why this all came to council a couple of weeks back, the urgency was because of that.
I wanted to lock in the parking availability for.
Yeah, or just, yeah, and I'm sure there was.
Do we have any interest in it as a city? In the building?
What would we do with it?
Well, we would raise it and.
I mean, architecturally, it's a neat building.
Okay, well, yeah.
I mean, architecturally, it's a contributing.
Really?
It's a contributing building to downtown, right? Well, I, just nod your head.
If there ever was to be a housing component in that area, like the Eaton Hotel in Wichita and several others, they would build from the historic building onto that site, build a new three or four-story structure and connect the two via some sort of corridor or something like that. So I think that was the vision or the intent of what could possibly happen on that lot.
Okay.
So, is there another Mansky around?
Oh, there's probably somewhere.
Yeah, maybe we could have a conversation with Jack and Jay.
Yeah, yeah. They're always very open.
No, I agree.
But that's what it would, it would take a developer.
Would take a developer, yeah.
And to Jim's efforts, he did have a couple that did, you know, roach that and he actually did take the building, go through the historic listing process and.
Jim, as long as this is going, I guess for the, for the benefit of folks who would be watching this, you might come on up.
Yeah, sorry.
You might be finished by now, but that dawns on me.
He was supposed to just nod his head.
He's not good with instruction.
Jim Saitnader, Planning, Interim Planning Director, if there ever is a future for that building of the Hope Building to really be revitalized, it's probably, best use would be in housing and it would be in combination with the idea of that property by the property owner was, you could build new structures, new floors, tie them into the Hope Building with a corridor over the alley and park folks and things like that. So that was the vision, I think, which drove this particular option.
Okay. I mean, Hope is an old name in the community and so.
Is it?
Yeah, it really is. I, I don't know what, he's the man who built these little funny houses all over town, he created them for his workers or for employees. So, you know, I, I hate to see the community lose the building.
I get you.
I wouldn't want to tear it down.
But Councilmember Dave Line's point, it definitely is one of the buildings that, that needs some.
Needs help.
Attention and detail, yes.
Would you be interested in having a conversation with the Manskys?
Well, certainly, yeah, I will, I will definitely do that. One value.
Explore those things with them.
Yeah, one value, if the city did have some sort of a option or things like that, you could put it out into the development world that way and just see if there are others that, that might see something there, so.
Yeah.
Walnut Street is a street full of great old buildings that eventually could, could make some great housing, so.
I keep asking, and I should really learn the boundaries, is this anywhere within the opportunity zones?
It would be, yes.
It would be, okay, so there's possibly some incentive for a person to, to put some money into that area.
Yeah, that's our hope is, you know, that might be a tool that would eventually loosen up some good capital.
Absolutely.
For projects like that, but what we hear over and over in our early work and trying to research. Projects like that. But what we hear over and over in our early work in trying to research opportunities zone is it has to be a good project.
It has to be, okay. Makes sense.
Because people are investing in it, so they don't want to lose their money, so.
While we're talking about, I'm sorry to get off the subject, but while, while you're there and while we're talking about that particular block there, tell us about what the plans are now for that property just to the west there that we raised that building and what's our plans for that? I know we've had a little conversation about that.
Oh, there's going to be a great urban park that Sean and Justin are working on that will actually connect people that park in the two lots south of the Fox to the entrance of the Fox through a really great meeting space. I think it'll be a real hotspot for downtown. I think we'll see a lot of people using it for meetings and activities, maybe some music type things, food truck parking. It's just, it's really going to be, be a great project and we're really, really excited about that.
Sometime next year?
It's scheduled and funded for next year, yes. Yeah, yeah. As well as the resurfacing of the south lot on the opposite side of Sherman Street, so. And probably one other thing that council really ought to know about is how great a neighbor electrics is to that parking lot and how much they appreciated the investment there. They actually had a workday back in October which Sean helped coordinate with and, oh gosh, they had 30 or 40 of their workers out there working on the plannings and things around there. And Sean and Parks developed a plan, a landscaping plan, and then the electrics company invested in the plannings and their people to do all of that, so. And then they're going to take care of it and watch over it and keep it looking real nice, so.
They have how many buildings in the area, Jim? It's more than one, isn't it?
Yeah, they pretty much have the north side of Sherman going down from their building, which again is another great historic building. And if you haven't been inside and seen what they've done with that building, it's really, really awesome.
It is neat. I've been inside.
Yeah, it is. It was the old Masonic Lodge, so it's, it's a cool building anyway, but they've sure remodeled and restored it and it looks great.
Go keep that on your front burner if you would. I know you don't have a lot on your plate, but.
Yeah, but that is, that is one of the great corners that, that does need, with everything else going on, and you're exactly right, it needs to look better than it does. Find a use for it.
Okay, are we ready?
Following up on a comment that John made, I think John Dave Line, to you, John, since, since Trent's not here. I think John Dave Line used the, the word eyesore. Is it at the point where we can, inspection-wise, push for some improvement to the appearance of the building to, and also in terms of further deterioration?
I don't think it's at that, at all.
It's not a danger.
No.
It's not.
In terms of the demolitions that you see become, become before the council, no.
It's not going to fall down tomorrow.
I mean, it's, I mean, the windows, I mean, it's secure, it's, you know, yeah. I, I mean, as far as I know, the walls aren't falling down or anything like that, so. I mean, you know, the owner had a, I've seen some plans that, that they had several years ago for, you know, the housing side, but so there were some pretty good ideas for that at some point in time, but yeah. But no, there's no way that building would qualify under any kind of demolition.
Well, no, no, I wasn't pursuing demolition, just, just exterior maintenance. Appearance, maybe the roof, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I.
No, I'm not, I'm.
I don't think so, no.
I'd oppose demolition if there's any way to, to avoid demolishing that building, kind of as Nancy referred to, but just, just appearance in, in the, in the area.
I would not say it violates any of our codes, no.
Is the dollar lease agreement, is that, did you say that is negotiable then, only going back to our archery conversation?
We're paying a dollar.
We're paying a dollar.
We're paying.
We're paying a dollar for giving.
If you want to pay more, I suppose we could go too.
We can offer more and they might, might not.
Then no, no. Fifty cents, let's go the other direction.
Is that too much?
I'm telling you, I got a head cold, so I got the next one. I was actually going to say the proceeds from that could pay for the archery, but we're going backwards at this point, so that's not going to work. All right, well, then, no, I'm not.
Nancy, you still on? Yeah, okay, I will move to, excuse me. Approve the lease agreement between Four Results Incorporated and the City of Hutchinson for a portion of the parking lot at Sherman and Walnut owned by Four Results Inc. and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second? Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the lease agreement as, as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 8B, consider 2019 memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You have before you the proposed contract for 2019 for the Fraternal Order of Police. Following changes, compensation, the pay ranges have been adjusted. That was the purpose of establishing pay ranges to keep them current with the market for the positions for the city's employees. And that change has been reflected in that wage scale. The second component there, the merit-based pay and bonus administrative procedures, you've seen those before in the other contracts. It's the same procedures. It's the performance evaluation that we have discussed many, many times. Now that is included in the, in the contract for 2019. Specialty pay is new. If you look at Article 10 compensation, you'll see categories for emergency response team, firearms training instructor, defensive tactics instructor, emergency vehicle operations certification instructor. These are additional items of compensation to the officers who qualify for those positions. That is, that is absolutely new. Promotional ranking procedures from removing the lieutenant from the contract. Lieutenants aren't a part of the bargaining unit anyway, so the references to that didn't make a great deal of sense and those were removed. It's a one-year contract. There is a letter of agreement for some wage compression adjustments that's included. There's also a letter of agreement for non-occupational light duty, which is, is on a trial basis and it will, you know, it will be not incorporated into the contract, but utilized in 2019. I believe they're doing some of that now. And it will continue if there's an agreement of the parties later on to do so. It's on a trial basis to see how that goes.
Okay, just evaluated as, at the end of the year, okay.
And that's all we have.
Well, it's been a long process with, with the negotiations this year and I want to thank the staff. I know, Paul, you're one of those folks involved in that process and, and also want to thank Chief Spear and, and Hooper for their assistance in that process as well, the respective staffs.
I move we approve the 2019 MOU with the FOP Lodge Number 7 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 8C, Salt City Splash and Fun Valley Annual Report.
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. I just want to take a minute or two just to go over really high-level reports and then I'll turn it over to Tony to go a little bit in, in more detail. First, I just want to talk a little bit about the relationship between Hutch Rec and the City Parks Department. Tony and I, we meet on a weekly basis. Our staffs, especially in the summertime, they, they communicate daily. Have a really strong working relationship with Hutch Rec. Really feel like our two organizations are moving in the same direction, so. Very, very exciting. I think there's going to be some good things that are going to happen in the near future with the, the master plan and some of those other things that we're working on together, so. But to dive into the Salt City Splash report, first I want to talk about, we always, we always want to know how much it costs, what the, what the subsidy was. 2018 subsidy was $43,406. That's up $400 from 2017. That's right in line with the average subsidy that the city reimburses Hutch Rec for the operation of the pool. Attendance was 4,468, which again is right in line. The five-year average is, is right around 40,000. So, we're kind of par for the course as far as cost and as far as attendance. Overall cost, based on 2018 budgeted numbers, we're looking at 290,000 approximately for the total cost between the city's maintenance and then the subsidy to Hutch Rec. So, as far as what it costs the taxpayers to operate Salt City Splash, it's roughly 290,000. Also want to highlight a couple CIP items that will possibly be seen here in the, in the next few months. The first one is in 2021, we're looking at replacing all of the shade structures. Most of the shade structures are original to the, to the pool, so they're going on 20 years old. It's just time for a refresh. We're starting to have some concerns with some rusting around the bases. There might, might be some structural issues there. So, we're going to have those evaluated and look at replacing all of those. Also, in the report, the last section of the, of the report talks about a lot of maintenance issues, some of it's just cleaning, some of it's CIP level. So, we'll have those conversations with the pool staff, with Ted Nelson from, from HRC and, and probably look at developing a, a larger CIP item for, for 2021, 2022, somewhere in there to really address some of these long-term issues at the pool. So, that's something we can look forward to, the CIP process. It seems crazy, but we're going to begin here soon. Also, so then I want to move on to Fun Valley real quick. Subsidy for Fun Valley, let me get to my notes. In 2018 was $37,352, which is down from $54,000 from last year. Total budget, or total cost to the taxpayer, I guess, including the city's maintenance, is $384,600. So, again, cheaper than, than it was when, when the city had the entire operation. Also want to point out a couple things as far as upcoming CIP. We're about 95% complete with a coming exterior renovation, so that was painting. We replaced, I believe it was over 100 square feet of structural steel that was beginning to deteriorate. Replaced some fencing, really just gave the exterior, that main structure, kind of a facelift and some structural help as well. That project should be done as soon as weather allows. 2019, I mean, the budget is bleacher replacement, so that's a big-ticket item. We've budgeted $750,000 for that. We are, I just, like last week or the week before, I got the initial design concepts. We'll be working through that. So, as we get something a little bit closer, we'll present that to council so you guys can kind of see what those bleachers could look like before we proceed with that project sometime in, in 19. Also in 2020, we've budgeted for restroom renovation, $250,000. Cheer Tony will agree with this. That's the single number-one complaint we get at Fun Valley is the restrooms. So, we're looking at, at addressing those hopefully in 2020, so. So, that's my very, very high-level summary. I'll let Tony go into more detail about either and then I'll be around for questions.
Don't leave yet.
Okay.
I missed, how much bleachers replacement budgeted?
We've budgeted $750,000. We, we don't have it, we're working on a design right now for that, so that number, I'm hoping will come down. So, as we work through that design, we'll, we'll narrow in on a number, so.
Okay.
But that's what's in the budget book for 19.
Big step.
Yeah.
Big step.
Much needed.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
All right, with that, I'll introduce Tony.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. Tony Finley, Executive Director, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. I'll stay with Fun Valley comments. Again, I won't go into a lot of detail. Be happy to answer questions when I'm done, if you have anything specific. But started 2018 with 17 sanctioned tournaments. We lost four of those tournaments due to weather and three of those to low, low registration, so the typical outdoor sporting event continues to play there. We were excited. We did add two state championships though this year, the USA Softball 8U and 10U Championship. We hosted at Fun Valley and then the National Baseball Congress 13U State Championship was added to Fun Valley. So, continue to work in diversifying and bringing multiple associations to Fun Valley. In 2014, Fun Valley hosted nine sanctioned USSA tournaments. In 19, looking forward to what we have coming up, we've got approval, we're going to host nine USSA sanctioned tournaments, three National Baseball Congress tournaments, one of those being a state, six USA softball tournaments, one of those being a state, and then four what we call Hutch Rec tournaments. We've had some success on doing some, our own, own tournaments, specifically the Kansas Woodbat tournament that you see in, in the report. So, we're continuing to grow that reputation of just doing our, our local tournaments as well, so. Excited about the diversity and the number of tournaments. When you look at that total number of 22 tournaments, the only weekend that we do not have something going on at Fun Valley between the months of April and July is Easter weekend. We, we don't have a tournament that weekend. But every other weekend, and so it, it took us five years to, to build that up. But there's a lot that goes into getting those tournaments sanctioned, you know, and being on the calendar and getting teams to, to come to those. So, so we're excited about where we're at with the number of, of tournaments coming up. I highlight this past year, our relationship with USSA. We had the opportunity to host a professional softball game at Hobart Deter. The Chicago Bandits played the Australian National Team at Hobart. Just kind of a fun, one-off opportunity. We had over 700 residents come out to that. So, it was just a fun night, you know, that was the first professional softball team in Hut, or game in Hutchinson. And so hopefully we can continue to look for those kind of opportunities as we continue to build a reputation of hosting, hosting events here in Hutchinson. Justin spoke to the operating subsidy. We continue to work on efficiencies. As you noted, the subsidy to us is significantly down this year, even with losing a few of the tournaments to weather. A lot of that is because we've increased the number of tournaments. So, it's gotten to be if we lose a few, it's not, not horrible to the budget. So, we'll continue to, to work on that. We're, you know, we're excited about the capital improvements. The painting got done this fall, so, so now it, it looks sharp. Excited about the bleachers and, and Justin's correct, we, we get beat up all the time on the restrooms. No matter what we do to those things, they, they just don't present well. And so, we cannot wait until, until that renovation's, that renovation's done. So, that, that was just kind of a quick summary of where we're at on operation. Be happy to answer any questions on Fun Valley, Hobart Deter before we move on to Salt City Splash.
A couple of your tournaments, I, as I recall, you made comment about scheduling conflicts with other tournaments in the, in the area. Have your efforts towards trying to, trying to eliminate those been successful?
Well, we get some wins, we get some losses. You know, when, when Fun Valley was built, it was kind of the only, the only complex. And now that complex, there's, there's a lot of them. And so, we are continually competing with other cities and facilities to, to host these tournaments and continue to build those relationships. I think we have more wins than losses just by the number of sanctioned tournaments we are getting. I would, if you go and look at a Great Bend schedule, a Hayes schedule, a Salinas schedule, they're not doing 22 tournaments. And so, I think for, for where we're at in the region and the age of our facility, all of those are newer facilities. We continue to put on a good product, run a good tournament, and people enjoy, enjoy coming out there. So, we continue to work on it, but I, I'm not going to win every one of them.
Sure. Tony, do you still have to incentivize some of these tournaments to come here or?
No, not, not financially.
Not financially?
No.
Really?
Correct. No, there, there is no bid fee or anything.
There's no bid fee?
Right. We're, we're just doing this on reputation of the tournament and the, the locations.
That seems to, to be appealing.
Yeah, that's what we're, so far we're competing fairly well, I think.
And it must be too because of those new or rebuilding of old relationships with these various organizations. And it must be too, because of those new or rebuilding of old relationships with these various organizations. U triple S A has always been around forever, but they've made these inroads with NBC and USA softball and others that either maybe we had and lost or whatever, but we've got them now.
Yeah, one of the, one of the challenges, and I didn't realize this when I actually to take this over, was around the state, Fun Valley was known as just a U triple S A facility, period, that that would be the only tournaments. And so we, we had to really work hard to build up trust with these other associations that, no, we will allow other tournaments into the facility. Our goal is to run tournaments slash events to fill the facility. And to U trip, trips credit, U triple S A's credit, they, they understand that and they're, and they continue to work with us in making sure we're diversified and keeping the facility viable, for sure.
And it looks like you've got a good balance of softball and baseball, or I'm sure fine tuning that as, as years go on, you learn as you go, but.
There's more kid, more baseball. Just seems to be more kids that play, boys that play baseball than softball. So there'll always probably be more baseball tournaments, but we'll continue to, to host as many softball as we can.
Sure.
Tony, this was year five that we just finished?
Year four, we finished, we're going into five.
With, with the rec commission?
Yeah, with the rec, yes.
Yeah, with the rec. What do you see over the next five to ten years? As you, as you look in your crystal ball? Or three to five, how's that?
Picture new bleachers and new bathrooms.
Can I pass to Justin?
What's that?
Can I pass back to Justin on that one?
Well, I wasn't thinking so much of the CIP part of it.
No, I know.
Improvement of facilities, but just use of that, that facility and.
So we're going to continue to face competition. The city of Goddard with their star bonds, they're putting in, if they ever get that done, I think four baseball fields. One of the things with our Woodbat championship and our showcase tournament, when you read, those are very successful for us. And one of those is we have quality, what we call sixty, ninety fields in Hutchinson where we can host a lot of that level of baseball, you know, full-size baseball tournaments. And with Goddard comes online, that's going to be a competition to that. Wichita continues with the sports forum, you know, continues to grow. So we're always, next five to ten years, we're going to continue to see new competition in the, in that sense. A lot of the teams that we draw from are rural Kansas and the population continues to decline, you know, in rural Kansas. So doing things that can pull some Kansas City teams and some Oklahoma City teams to our facility, we, we need to look at that. I'll offer that, that's more than just the facility itself. You know, we, we have to have some other amenities within the city that brings those, those people here besides just an outstanding facility. So I, I think we'll always be a player viable. We need to be, we need those fields for our youth programs. When you, when you look at the number of youth we have playing in just our recreation fields, if we don't have those seven fields out there, we're going to have to put them, we have to build them somewhere else. And so that facility is really necessary just for the delivery of our youth baseball and softball programs that we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions on? Okay, Salt City Splash, we had eighty-four operating days this summer. We lost three of those full days to weather and three partials, so relatively a good, good year weather-wise. Attendance, as the report shows, stayed consistent over the last, you know, five to seven years. We're right in that thirty to thirty-two thousand attendance mark. I believe next year's, year twenty, I believe of that facility. Or could be, yeah, I think it's year twenty operating. So it's starting to, you know, it's, it's been around a while. It's been around a while, I think Justin's comments on the capital items reflect that. So continue to do what we can off, we offer different events out there to try, to try to get new people to come down to, to the facility. Obviously swim lessons continue to be the driver of a lot of that. Seven hundred and thirty-one individuals took swim lessons this past year. So continuing to do the things we can to get as many people through the door as, as possible. So not a lot of new there, again, twenty years of operating, stays fairly consistent. The subsidy continues to say, stay consistent, so happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the hundred thousand dollars. This the last year or next year, John?
I think we budgeted nineteen was the last year, yeah. So this coming year of our, out of the growth fund, right.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, will those funds be available for whatever we can use the growth fund for? Or would, would you want to continue funneling that money into the pool?
They would be available for whatever the council would determine that could be used for under the growth fund. Typically, that's been in the bottom part of the equation, well, it is, it's funded there for capital projects. So it could be pool-related, it could be street-related.
Okay.
Yeah, but that would be the council decision each year, really.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Tony, I noticed in, in your comments on, on the splash, attendance days of the week. Generally, you said the, the latter part of the week, Wednesday through Sunday, Thursday through Sunday, were higher attendance days in the early part of the week, or maybe it was through Saturday. And then Sunday through Tuesday or so was lower. Something that, that came to my mind, and I, I tried to look at, your numbers weren't broken down by day other than just simply listing what was the highest, the lowest attendance days over the last five years. Has there been any thought given? One more comment. And then I noted, I think it says that at a minimum, there's fifteen lifeguards on duty just to, to staff the, the aquatics. So, and, and of course, looking at numbers, salaries are the biggest part of the, of the budget.
Correct.
Has there been any thought given to maybe not being a seven-day operation? And impacts that might have, or looking at the, you know, as you do, obviously, look at the daily attendance and if you're paying fifteen-plus people.
Yeah, well, the, the, the pro would be obviously your first year, your, your salary cost would go down. But over the long run, your attendance would go. That reliability of it being open, you know, if, if a Monday and a Tuesday or a great weather day and we're closed, you know, delivery of that too. So I would not recommend that at all. If we're going to operate a, an outdoor aquatic facility, it needs to be open every day in the summer now that we can possibly be open. I, I don't think you're going to see any savings over a five-year period by, by doing that. So, so does that answer?
I guess, I, do you know of any, any aquatic centers, swimming pools that have done, done that?
No, no. No, I have been doing this for twenty-one years and I've never heard of a outdoor aquatic center closing any day during the summer. Because you're, we only open eighty-four days anyway.
Eighty-four days.
If you were, if you were looking at that, you, you just need to look at closing it. There would be no reason to, to do that.
So seven or none, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. Because you only have eighty-four, so, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Pardon? Our cat, I, do they, I'm not sure if they.
I think they would.
I, I'm not sure if they have a regular ride there. There's a lot of buses, kids bus down there, Boys and Girls Club, just every day, yeah.
I've, I've said this before, you know, location hurts us. That, that location, out of sight, out of mind, is, is not an easy, easy thing. When you look at the size of that facility, our attendance numbers do not translate to where that facility is. When you look at other cities, comparable cities that have similar complexes, they have a higher, way higher number of attendants than we do. And the only two differences that we can tell is location and lazy river. Those other facilities have a lazy river, but I am, that would not fix our attendance problem. If we invested in a lazy river down there, that would not, it's location. So.
So its location would be very difficult to adjust.
Correct.
How have you thought about fixing that problem? Then it'd be transportation potentially, accessibility, if you will, bike paths?
You know, a, a summer pool's never changed. It's a, you, you want it accessible for your kids to be able to access without parents needing them and, you know, ride bikes and walk, you know, and take, you know, hey, we'll buy a season pass, you got two hours, run down to the pool this afternoon, right? That, that doesn't happen. We're, you're away from your population base for that purpose. Driving, yeah, it's not that big a deal. But sending a kid out the door, you know, if you're north of eleventh, even north of fourth, you know, now, now you're talking about a significant, significant distance, crossing, you know, major streets, railroads. There's, there's not a true sidewalk system the whole way there. So, you know, you're, you're just, you're limited on that attraction. And, you know, a reminder, you know, to see that facility, you have to be in Kerry Park. You know, you don't see it during the winter, the kids don't see the slide as they're headed to school, right? There, there's no reminder that that thing's down there, except for the marketing efforts. And, you know, after doing this, being here six years, I, I don't know what else, what other answer there is other than just location. Because the numbers are low. I'm not, numbers are about fifteen thousand, attendance numbers, fifteen to twenty thousand lower than what they should be for that size of pool and this size of community.
Other questions? Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Do, do keep up the good work on both of those attractions, Fun Valley and, and the splash. We, we appreciate it and certainly the working relationship between the city and the rec commission. Next item.
Item nine, report of city officials.
Nancy?
Nothing except Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all, enjoy your holiday season.
Thank you. John?
I've got just a couple of things. I was going through some of my old files and I've got, pulled out one. A city council presentation on stormwater master plan update dated March of twenty eighteen. And I know we had an update back then. And I'm wondering if perhaps in the next, in the first quarter of twenty nineteen, we could perhaps ask our, ask Jeff and others to give us an update of what has transpired in this past year as far as the stormwater master plan? Is that a, is that a possibility? And then the second item would be the comp plan itself. And I know we set in motion, we've had some changes within the planning department and so on, but whether or not it would be in order to get an overview of what is transpiring in terms of the monitoring of the comp plan itself. I mean, I know it's a twenty-year plan, but I think we have it in somewhat increments of, of five years. And I'd be kind of interested since, so, you know, again, we don't get into this situation that, well, it just, the plan just sits on the shelf. That if we could perhaps ask planning and other department heads and so on to put your heads together and sometime in the first quarter of twenty nineteen to have a, a comp plan update. Okay?
All right, thank you. David?
Just what Nancy said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all, and that's all, thank you.
Jade?
Ditto, Merry Christmas.
I think John had mentioned to us in his weekly report, our first meeting of January is New Year's Day. And Paul, maybe you can advise, do we need to take any official or formal action to?
Cancel.
Do, to cancel or, or what's the council's wishes, I guess I should say? Do, do our?
You can meet when you want to.
Right. Can we not meet or is there a requirement to have two meetings a month?
I, I pulled the language out of the charter ordinance, you want to hear it?
You, you want to read it, go for it.
It's just this long and then, and then you'll, and then you'll get it. The governing body shall meet regularly twice a month unless the governing body shall determine that such a meeting is not necessary or oftener if public business requires. A call signed by a majority of the governing body shall be sufficient warrant for a special meeting. Regular or special meetings shall always be open to the public. So you determine when you meet.
Mr. Manager, do we, do you have any need for us to meet on the first of January?
It was my recommendation that we not. Couple of the items we had on the agenda today are typically what we do that very first meeting, very light agenda. So we moved them to this meeting just in case that was a possibility. So I'm looking, talking to staff, there's really no real reason to have a meeting, so it'd be, yeah.
Do we, do we need a motion? Paul?
You, you can, mainly it's just to, to notify everyone that we, we won't be meeting. I mean, we wouldn't meet on the first anyway, it's be the following day. But you can cancel the first meeting in January two thousand and nineteen.
Might there be a motion to that effect?
I'll, I'll attempt. I move that we cancel the first meeting in January of two thousand and nineteen, only having the second meeting, which would be the fifteenth, if I'm reading that correctly, of January, resume business at that time.
Stack up.
Got a motion in a second to cancel our first meeting of January? Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Ginske?
Yes.
Yes. And just a reminder, there won't be any pay deduction either for that.
It's, it's a paid holiday?
Paid holiday, yeah.
Good deal.
We'll get our normal.
Yeah, you get your normal. Good, glad to hear that. I'm, I'm relieved, I, I was concerned about that.
You're counting on that, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager?
The only other thing I had, city holiday, I think I've got confirmation, so we'll, we'll get that information out to you. That's January twenty-third. We'll probably take different cars up based on schedules, but I'll get that all arranged and invite our legislators out to dinner that one night. So I'll be in touch with the details on that, so.
Awesome.
Mayor, that's all I had, other than request for an executive session.
Right.
How much time do we need, do you think?
Let's just say thirty minutes, yeah.
Where'd that put us, ten-thirty? I would move to recess into executive session pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception, KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. In order to discuss a change to a staff position, the open meeting to resume in city council chamber at ten-thirty AM.
Second.
Moved and seconded to recess into executive session. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Ginske?
Yes.
Decken?
Yes.